My message is then, if the do it. Then you're not well. And this is the one man. Did he do this? He did. You said this.
And this is supposed to be a thing.
That's it. Then. Yeah, Roger. Yeah, Roger. See, I'm doing that.
I've been posted on the city website. Likewise, copies of three reports have been posted on the city website. We have voluminous communications that are on the website. So we can take a few department reports. So I think we'll skip fire. Nicholas.
Thirty-six calls for the month of September. One was down in the high rise in the trash tractor. One night that building, entire building, it poured with smoke. Took a couple hours to get it all out. Twenty-four alarms again. And year to date, as of the end of September, we were 324 calls. The vote has been started. I got pictures of it the other day. So that's on track and I'll get new pictures every couple. It's like a building full of that by the end of November, December.
That's it?
That's it.
Questions from the council?
Nick, is there any update on the option for our old engine?
No, it's going in with the with the rest of the stuff from the city.
Catching.
Any options, council? I think from public. Thank you, sir, for that brief and interesting consideration. Next up is Mia, who's online. Mia?
Yes, I'm here.
I can't see you.
Do you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, all of our weekly programs are still happening, which can be viewed on our calendar on the city house website, of course. We still have Zoom with Ed every Tuesday, Thursday at 8:00 a.m. We have aerobics with Lynn Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays at 10:00 a.m. And Becky Sanders back with her amazing Alexander Technique on Thursday at 11:30 a.m. from the month. And then on October 31st, it's gonna be a pretty special day. On that day, we're gonna be partnering with the library. There's gonna be a core strength and balance class that's gonna be happening at 10:30 a.m. at our center. And from 1:00 to 2:00 on the 31st, we're having a representative from Medicare that's coming up to provide like open enrollment. So if anyone's interested, please come up or if you want to give us a call for more information, you know, we're 518-828-3200. And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mia. Any questions from council members?
Mia, is there any way we can get numbers of like, you know, drop? I know you have a drop in in the center, like, you know, you know, what does it look like in a weekly basis? Does it compete with the nine to one at the firehouse with the county program? So is there any way we can get numbers for these activities and events?
I I could get the other numbers of how many people have attended or how many people are coming?
Coming, attending.
I think that, yeah, I'll I'll contact our clerk and I can get those numbers numbers for you. I can have them sent over to you.
Yeah, especially like the timeframe, like between nine, you know, nine and one, you know, is is there a conflict with what's going on at the at the firehouse with what they offer?
I don't think so because our programs are different than theirs. Ours are more aerobics and movement classes, and they have other community programs where community engagements of of other types of programs. You almost run two separate, different types of programming.
Right, but it's still, you know, the service is still there. It could be, you know, you know, taken away from some of our individuals.
Okay, I I'll just get you the numbers and I'll have my clerk send them over to you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have questions?
Laura. Yeah, the core exercise program. I thought I saw a flyer that said it was 11:30 on Friday. I was on Thursday. Is that correct or did I misunderstand that?
On Thursdays? It's 11:30 for the Alexander Technique.
Yeah, but I thought I saw another flyer that said 11:30 also for the core exercises. And I thought that could be conflicted. There might be a mistake in that.
I don't see an 11:30 program on a Thursday.
So when is the core exercise program again?
The core exercise program, that's on 10, it's at 10:30 a.m. happening on the 31st. And it's a partnership program, have to keep the library.
The 31st, the day of the week is that?
The 31st is a Thursday.
Okay, all right. I thought I saw a flyer that said 11:30. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you, it's fine. You've still been here, so I think you'll just get your police report.
Hi.
Hello, Chief.
Hello, how's everyone tonight? So for September 2024, a number of youth support incidents were won. That was in the Seventh Street Park. Someone was attacked with a hammer. The person was subsequently tased and taken into custody. The number of arrests were 61 for 76 total charges. Number of emotionally disturbed persons called were three. Number of calls involving a drug overdose or suspected drug overdose were two. And HPD administered Narcan one time, and that subject was transported to CMH after that. Any questions, Ryan? No.
Council members?
Are all the incidents, like, what is it, X number of people? Is that unique people or is it the same? Is it?
It generally is the same people. For the emotionally disturbed persons calls, is that what you're saying?
Or any of them. I mean, is, you know, so we get a candle and like, is there's a, you know, you have X number of incidents. Does that mean that there's that number of people or is it, you know, less people or just?
It could, there could be incidents that have the same people or it could be different. In this reporting, it's just the number of incidents that we responded to that particular type of call.
So for example, the 61 arrests were 61 individual arrests that had 76 charges of them. But those 61 arrests may have been the 30 people getting rearrested.
Well, the 60, yes, yes.
Council members, anyone else? Public?
I do, I do actually have something to add, though. President, if you don't mind, based on the last meeting, the questions about. Delinquent notices have been sent out, starting to be sent out in waves for past day parking tickets. And I believe revenue has been seeing some response to that currently. I'm not sure exactly how much response, but there has been some response to that.
We can find out. Heather, are you there and listening?
I am sure, but I do not know the answer to that question.
Okay. Fair enough. I guess, oh, God.
Chief, what's the update on license renew? I know there was a query sent out a couple weeks ago from your department. So what's the update on?
The alarm licenses?
Yeah.
We've just received all the notifications for the fees. And we're organizing a letter, we're drafting a letter to send out to go to businesses and residents that we know have alarms and to try to put out something to the public to contact us so that we can get this started beginning of the year.
Now, in the past, there was like a card given out too. Is that gonna be the same or is just the notification is just gonna be on your gateways?
That we haven't decided yet, but I think we're gonna keep trying to make it a little bit more.
Council, yeah. And I I don't know if you're done, but I just wanted, I love the idea of the car seat. Can you can you tell us more about the car seat for Wednesday? Is it Wednesday, right?
Wednesday, the car seat event?
Yeah.
So we have a car seat event that's happening on October 19th. Originally, it was gonna be at the firehouse, but we made the change today. We're doing it in coordination with Spark because they have their Charles Wilkins event at the park on the same day. So we asked them if we can actually move our car seat event. So we'll be doing car seat checks and obviously we also have a low income program. So if anyone is in need of a seat or needs their car seat checked, we're able to do that there. Or my point.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Rob, are you on the phone somewhere? Not there. Oh. Maybe it is Liz.
Maybe they're not verified.
Not verified. Okay, let's go to the resolutions since we don't have either Rob or Liz online or in person. The first resolution. The Department of Mission, there's a petition, introduction on the second. Tersha and Margaret. The second resolution. Is in support of the Columbia Green Addiction Coalition. And I want to mention the second. Margaret. Oh, Margaret, I. The next resolution. There's more chairs behind the screen that you can take them out and sit. There's a lot of extra chairs now. Resolution authorizes budget amendments to encumber funds for the migration of technology, tax collection, and utility voting software. Heather, would you like to speak to this?
Sure, so basically, in the 2023 budget, we included funds to migrate from our very old technology software to the new system. It got delayed much further than we thought, and I missed encumbering the monies that were allocated in the 2023 budget. They should have been encumbered with the other encumbrances earlier in the year. It didn't have that much of an impact because, as I said, the project has been delayed, but we're finally on the docket and we will be starting work this year. It will continue through probably the first half of 2025. So we'll be encumbering the money from the 23 budget to the 24 budget for this resolution. And then you can expect to see another resolution early next year to encumber whatever's remaining of those funds into the 2025 budget. So we can get all of the all of the software and the programs migrated.
Thank you. Introduction in a second, please. My great. And go on. The next resolution authorizes transfer funds to cover the city's retirement contribution. Any questions? Introduction in a second. Margaret and Tersha, any questions? Okay. A resolution authorizing a chargeback by Columbia County for Greenport EMS services. Introduction in a second. Tersha and you all. Any questions? Can you just go over this? Heather, you wanna explain this?
Sure, I didn't hear the question, Margaret, though.
No, I just wanted a brief explanation of what the resolution.
What it is, it's an annual, go ahead, Heather.
Yes, so basically what this does is it authorizes the city to enter into an agreement with the county. And and it determines how much, we've been doing 75,000 a year for as long as I've been here. We've done this every year. It is so that Greenport EMS will provide ambulatory services within the city limits. And that does not, that gets included into the overall county tax levy, not the city tax levy. So that's how it gets, how the costs get distributed among the the citizens.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Any other questions about that one? I see Rob is here now, so we can have Rob's report. You've got one.
Yeah, thank you. I'm here.
Liz is on her way out.
Oh, okay, great. Guys, Rob, you wanna share your things?
I'm going right now. Okay, so 70s revenue at the sewer plant was 51,851. So we're on pace for about a about $100,000 surplus in that revenue item this year. The Union Street Sewer Main Project, we know it's about 80% done. The the main, the structures are everything are in place. They've all been tested, pressure tested. So that's all set. And now they're in the process of, it's over and migrating the houses one by one into the new service, to the new main. It should.
Rob?
We're over here.
Appreciate that. It was approved. So we've reached out to all of the developers that will require that permit from the E C. We've sent them over what the requirements are. We've also reached out to the Edwards Engineering Consultant and made him aware that his his job really is to refer them to us so that we we can work on the permit process. But other than that, we've, everybody has the outline of what they need to do and that process is underway. The formal process is underway after a year and a half of discussions with the E C. The at the water department, so, you know, there was a valve, this is the butterfly valve. You can see the bill in the middle eye. And anyway, it had broken a couple of years ago when we were trying to do some pipe cleaning. And, you know, we had an alternate way to do pipe cleaning, but this really needed to be addressed. So they removed this, pulled the defective part out. We ended up replacing it into the pit. And it was, this is the section that that valve came out of and everything is back together. So it's, you know, the process started with a pretty large insertion valve. It's a special project. Contractor installs a balloon inside the pipe and, you know, then inserts a valve behind it. Anyway, we discussed it a couple months ago. So anyway, that's done. The lab service inventory is, what we've got is what we've got. We're gonna send it off to Department of Health. They're communicating with EPA. And at this stage, we don't really know what the next steps are. You know, they haven't, this whole process was about collecting an inventory as much information as possible. What the next phase is, is, you know, still, I guess, still to be determined. We will be doing hydrant flushing tonight, so it's kind of tomorrow night. That's a process that we do, it's a three-day process. We do it usually two to three times a year. This year, with some other projects that were going up, it just didn't happen. The the purpose of this one is, you know, there will be, there can be some kind of buildup inside of the the main. So when you flush a high volume through the hydrants, it kind of scarifies it and gets that out into the street or it goes away. And the other person, the reason is because it gives us a, you know, hands on each of the hydrants because we want to make sure that all the hydrants are in working order. We don't want the fire department to find out a hydrant doesn't work at 2:00 in the morning where there's a working structure fire. So it's part of a maintenance issue of the the water quality. It's water quality and also a physical maintenance issue. And we do that in the middle of the night so that way we don't disturb people with, you know, getting potentially discolored water. In the event somebody does get discolored water afterwards, we just suggest you open up your tub, cold water only. Let it run for a couple of minutes. Usually clears up pretty quickly. We still undergoing our, so DPW is doing winter restorations. Now, this was on Warren Street, and what happened is there was some, water service was put in for a new business. They do a patch, we come in, we excavate that out, and then we repour concrete and blacktop. And when we do this, we put the signs out, we give the specific date on when the work's gonna take place. And, you know, we have to do side of the road one day and the other side the second day. And so traffic has to run over one side. So that's why we take parking spaces on both sides. We have, there was a car accident, truck accident down at Fourth and Warren. So this is the pole that was there, and it's sheared off the base. The the traffic hat is pretty well smashed up and the base of it is destroyed. So there's no way to make it mount or work. We do have a spare pole down at the garage and it's ready to go. And also, we excavated around the old base and poured a new base. So we're ready to mount it, but we can't do anything until we acquire a head. And it's proven very challenging to get the newer style head to match our older style pole. So, you know, our electrician's getting a little creative, but once we have that, we'll put this thing mounted, rewire it, mount it, and then get that other light back in order. Now, as far as the streetscaping project, we have, you know, this is just down on Front Street. You know, the trenching is done in advance of it. They put stone basin. Here's curbing. You can see this is down along Front Street. We're also doing projects like this up at First and and Warren. There was a conflict between what the bid documents had in this project and what the specifications were. It sounds like it's the same, but there is a difference. What happened is that it called for a stamping detail in the sidewalks on Warren Street. But the arterial, the designer wanted it saw cut, which is more labor intensive, and it's a different, a different cloth setting. So that was part of the delay for getting those back, but they're supposed to be poured a suborn later this week. There'll be a line stop for hydrant relocation at the down on Front Street. There was an issue last week where people called complaining, saying that the city or Louisiana turned the water off at the terrace. Whether or not anybody's aware of that, obviously, that wasn't the issue. The issue was that the maintenance crew of the terrace turned the water off and didn't notify your tenants in agreement. So it had nothing to do with Louisiana, had nothing to do with the city. But we will be doing a line stop to move a hydrant, but that's on both sides of the hydrant. So we don't expect any outages because of that. Some ADA work. This is a horizontal.
So uh, seventy-two revenue at the uh sewer plan was fifty-one thousand eight hundred fifty-one. So we're on pace for about a about a hundred thousand dollar surplus in that revenue item this year. Uh, the Union Street sewer main project, we know it's about eighty percent done. The the main, the structures are everything are in place. They've all been tested, uh, pressure tested. So that's all set. And now they're in the process of, it was over and migrating the houses one by one into the new service, uh, to the new main. It should.
Rob? We're over here.
Appreciate that. Uh, it was approved. So we've reached out to all of the developers that will require that permit from D E C. We've sent them over what the requirements are. We've also reached out to uh the Edwards Engineering Consultant and made him aware that his his job really is to refer them to us so that we we can work on the permit process. But other than that, we've uh, everybody has the outline of what they need to do and and that process is underway. The formal process is underway after a year and a half of discussions with D E C. The um, at the water department, so you know, there was a valve, this is the butterfly valve. You can see the bill in the middle eye. And anyway, it had broken a couple of years ago when we were trying to do some pipe cleaning. And you know, we had an alternate way to to do pipe cleaning, but this really needed to be addressed. So they removed this, pulled the defective part out. We ended up uh replacing it into the pit. And it was, this is the section that that valve came out of and uh, everything is back together. So it's, you know, the process started with a pretty large insertion valve. It's a special project. Contractor installs a a balloon inside the pipe and, you know, then inserts a valve behind it. Anyway, we discussed it a couple of months ago. So anyway, that's done. Um, the lab service inventory is uh, what we've got is what we've got. We're gonna send it off to uh Department of Health. Uh, they're communicating with EPA. And at this stage, we don't really know what the next steps are. You know, they haven't, this whole process was about collecting an inventory as much information as possible. Um, what the next phase is, is, you know, still, I guess, still to be determined. Uh, we will be doing hydrant flushing tonight. So it's time tomorrow night. Um, that's a process that we do, it's a three-day process. We do it uh usually two to three times a year. Uh, this year with some other projects that were going up, it just didn't happen. Uh, the the purpose of this one is, you know, there will be, there can be some kind of buildup inside of the the main. So when you flush a high volume through the hydrants, it kind of scarifies that and gets that out into the street where it goes away. And the other person, the reason is because it gives us a um, you know, hands-on each of the hydrants because we want to make sure that the all the hydrants are in working order. Uh, we don't want the fire department to find out a hydrant doesn't work at two o'clock in the morning where there's a working structure fire. So it's part of a maintenance issue of the the water quality. It's water quality and also a physical maintenance issue. Uh, and we do that in the middle of the night so that way we don't disturb people with, you know, getting potentially discolored water. In any event, somebody does get discolored water afterwards, we just suggest you open up your tub, cold water only. Let it run for a couple of minutes, usually clears up pretty quickly. Um, we still undergoing our, so DPW is doing winter restorations. Now, this was on Warren Street and what happened is there was some uh, water service was put in for a a new business. They do a patch, we come in, we excavate that out and then we re-pour concrete and blacktop. And when we do this, we put the signs out, we give this specific date uh when the work's gonna take place. And uh, you know, we have to do side of the road one day and the other side the second day. And so traffic has to run over one side. So that's why we take parking spaces on both sides. Um, we have uh, there was a car accident, truck accident down at Fourth and Warren. So this is the pole that was there and it's sheared off the base. Uh, the the traffic hat is pretty well smashed up and the base of it is is destroyed. So there's no way to make it mount or work. We do have a spare pole down at the garage and it's ready to go. And also we excavated around the old base and poured a new base. So we're ready to mount it, but we can't do anything until we acquire a head. And it's proven very challenging to get the newer style head to match our older style pole. Um, so you know, our electrician's getting a little creative. But once we have that, we'll put this thing mounted, rewire it, mount it, and then get that other light back in order. Now, as far as the streetscaping project, we have um, you know, this is just down on Front Street. You know, the trenching is done in in advance of it. They put stone basin, here's curbing. Uh, you can see this is down uh, yeah, along Front Street. Um, we're also doing projects like this up at First and and Warren. Uh, there was uh, a conflict between what the bid documents had in this project and what the specifications were. It sounds like it's the same, but uh, there is a different, what happened is that it called for a stamping detail in the the sidewalks on Warren Street. Uh, but the the arterial, the designer wanted it saw cut, which is more labor intensive. And uh, it's a different, a different cloth setting. So uh, that was part of the delay for getting those back, but they're supposed to be poured a sub-borne later this week. Um, there'll be a line stop for hydrant relocation at the uh, down on Front Street. There was an issue last week where people called complaining saying that the city or Louisiana turned the water off at the terrace. Um, whether or not anybody's aware of that, obviously that wasn't the issue. The issue was that the maintenance crew of the terrace turned the water off and didn't notify their tenants in agreements. So it had nothing to do with Louisiana, had nothing to do with the city. Um, but we will be doing a line stop to move a hydrant, but that's on both sides of the hydrant. So we don't expect any outages uh because of that. Uh, some ADA work. This is a horizontal wall, so rather than replacing all of the existing ADA ramps to make them compliant, uh, this comes in, they saw on the bias and then they, they kind of split the difference between the pavement elevation and then the finished grade. Uh, it's significantly less expensive than having to demolish and re-pour sidewalks. Uh, Ferry Street Bridge, so the trusses were delivered a couple of weeks ago. We have um, at nighttime, the crane did its work, you know, putting them in place. And so they're all in place. The um, the cross members are also installed. And you know, this is just kind of gives you a basic idea. You know, the, this is the bottom of the new bridge. There's gonna be a whole deck on top of it. So you kind of, you get a better idea of what the finished grade is gonna be. It's gonna be pretty street uh run up and down this, that bridge on the approaches. Uh, part of the project was a water main installation to replace the one that was abandoned about twenty years ago. And so they just assemble the various sections, the four inches what's there, the eight inches what it needs to connect to. And then they put it in the ground. The white stuff you see here in this orange paint is uh solid rock. It's one of the couple of places where there's uh rock and not clay in the um, in the geology. We also are, so the bearings, which have been the one thing of the biggest contention, uh, they've just started fabricating them this week. They were supposed to have been fabricated, tested and delivered back in uh July. Um, so we've been doing work, but the real work has been kind of like a little bit on hold because we were able to set, so this is the new trust and it's actually on that wooden uh temporary bearing. Uh, when, so there's a amount of, we can do some work, we can do some of the forming, we can put some rebar in there. But you can't actually pour and begin work on the finished grades uh until the actual bearings are installed. So you know, they they do a bearing a day. Hopefully they'll be done later this week. They have to go to DOT in Albany to be uh tested. And once that's the, they clear that, they bring them to us and then we'll, we'll get them underneath it. And then we'll, we'll have a better idea where the schedule's gonna be. Hoping we can keep the schedule, but uh, like I said, these bearings are a critical part of the process. And uh, it's, they're about two months later than they were supposed to be here. And that is that.
Thank you, Rob. Margaret, question?
Uh, Rob, I had just had two questions on the Union Street project. Um, it's my understanding that two of the houses uh towards the end of the four hundred blocks were going to require some uh changes interior to the plumbing. Do you know the status of that for those two houses?
No, I don't, not specifically.
Okay. And then the other question is, like all of the uh pounding and so forth, that's all finished? But uh, obviously it's still fairly dusty. Do you know when, what the schedule is for when we could expect the road to be repaved?
Well, you know, like I said, we've got, still have a couple of weeks uh doing the laterals. Once that's done, everything else is ready, they can move right into road restoration. But this was raised as an issue over the last month. And so they're, they're actually bringing guys in with uh, with water trucks on the weekends. And you know, some other off times just to keep the, try and keep the dust down. Um, there's, you know, there's, there's some other products that are available, but because part of the road is paved and part of the road is not, you know, things that will work fine on dust don't work so well on pavement. They can make the road greasy, so you know, it's, like I said, it'll be, it'll be wrapped up pretty soon, so.
Yeah, I I did see that they were doing, they did a lot more in terms of water uh treatment in the last few weeks. But I'm, I'm getting questions about when, so you're thinking maybe a month, six weeks?
Yeah, by then it should be, yeah, I I'm pretty confident with that.
Thank you.
Councilman. Oh, look. This one is online, are I know. Okay, Bill. Good question.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
No.
Is Rob there?
Yes, Rob is online beside you.
But Rob, um, the road that's surrounding the old L and B factory, uh, is that a private road or is that private property? I mean, is that a public road or private property?
Private.
It's private. So I'm asking because on June fourth of this year, I saw a crew of three DPW, maybe four DPW workers and a dump truck full of hot asphalt filling potholes uh on the south side of the building. Can you explain why DPW is filling potholes on private property?
I would love to. So what happens is somewhere around the, no, 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 come on clown, you gotta listen for the answer. The answer is that the time you're talking about, it was just before Flag Day. And what happens is the uh police and EMS use private property as an emergency access and egress. And in exchange for that, many years ago, it was agreed upon the city officials that the DPW would patch some of the work there. So that way a private entity allowed public use for an event that has thousands of people at it. There you go.
Hey, Rob? Rob, have you always been full of bullshit?
Okay, we're done, Bill.
Wah, wah, wah.
Okay, any other questions about it? Okay, we're working on. Thank you, Rob.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, thank you.
Mister bullshit all the time.
This is not my name. Hello, everyone.
Hey.
I'm Lucy, I'm a student from Ohio, doesn't come to us by college. Um, my report for October for the U C department of youth. Uh, our after-school program started September ninth. Um, we have programming happening simultaneously.
No, it's like, Logan, are you ready?
Yeah, something there to do that after.
Yeah.
Uh, we have program happening simultaneously at the church at four fifty-one Union for our participants as well as at the youth center for our third degree. Um, and then we have our team programming again, starting at six thirty at the youth center, going to call nine thirty. A rec attendant team this year consists mostly of return staff, which is really great. It helps make the program run smoother. And we have a couple of new additions that worked with us this summer as counselors at Oakdale Summer Camp. Um, and we're hoping to add some interns as well with our intern program for the fall. Um, so what's happening at the departments? We'll talk about programs with our program coordinator, Nakira. Um, you know, she works to bring all the musical programs and field trips to our students. She works to create and maintain relationships with the programmers in our community uh as well as making new connections to offer a variety of different programming opportunities for our participants. Um, she also helps plan all the field trips and we've actually been able to take four trips already just in September. Uh, that is each group going to the same site once. Uh, we went to Greenport Park and we went apple picking at Clansville Fruit Farm Insurance House. They allow them to come and pick apples for free, which is really great. Because of our limited transportation, we do only take ten to twelve kids on each trip because we use our vans. So we're able to do multiple trips um to the same spots, so we're able to get everybody there eventually. Um, we don't have any photos because they're almost having too much fun to take pictures at those field trips apparently, so. Um, this is why we also have the Art School of Columbia County returning to work with our students. Again, we have the same artist working with our older students, she's a practicing artist. Um, she's, you know, that is her profession and she comes and teaches. And this is her third year with us and the kid there really is trying to grow closer to her, which helps make the kids be more interested in participating in the art classes that she is offering. Um, she also helped to create some of the decorations they put up for fall that you'll see. Um, at the K through two program location, we're working with Greater Hudson Promise Neighborhood with their once-a-month traveling early learning and literacy network program with Linda McGriff, uh, with students who are reading books together and they do a corresponding activity. Um, the kids are really enjoying that, I'll speak more about that in another slide. And we're excited to keep that program going. So our K through two program is led by our full-time rec attendant, Chameka Hughes. Um, I think we're running really smoothly, this is her second year running that program for us. And so we just started to really get the hang of it. It is also our second year ever doing that program, so uh, we're really excited that it has been successful enough to bring kids back for another year. They're enjoying getting to know everybody. Um, we had one of the counselors join us from Summer Camp at that location specifically, he gets along really well with the kids. Uh, we have this, this longer through the activity uh for the literacy group and they experimented with baking soda and vinegar and food coloring, which I'm sure you all remember from school is very exciting, especially one of the first times you see it. And so that threw a lot of kids into that program and we're thinking even more are gonna participate next time that they're there. And that's on top of the NOSF circus, um, coming back. They also are a renewed resource and they have like a lot of good relationships with our kids as well. Um, and then there's some photos of the kids getting into programming and being in the space as well. At the youth center, things are led primarily by our senior rec attendant, Tyrone. Uh, I think we're going really well with the first. Well, they've got a lot of different um activities. They're participating in, including the art programs go to. Two of our uh Oakdale counselors came to the department to work around the town school. Um, so that the kids really enjoyed working with at camp, so they're excited to see them again at the youth center. We also have a lot of new students with us this year for the youth program, which is really exciting. Um, we still offer homework help, we've got our rec room where we've got pool, ping pong, hockey, all the things. Um, and our full-time rec attendant, Jay Sean, hopefully all called Chu. He runs all the activities in the upstairs gym on a daily basis. He's facilitating, you know, games that the kids already know and love and any recent new things for them to try as well. Um, I'm really excited to see how this sort of, because we've just been at it for a few weeks. So we can see some of the decorations and some of the things on the next slide. Um, Jay Sean Chu also leads our team programming in the evening. He um says that they're going really well, the numbers are predicted, as predicted right now, they're pretty low to start because um it is really hard to get teams to register for programming. And we do hold a boundary that if you're not registered for the first couple of weeks, you can't come much, so you are registered. And there's a lot of injuries that could happen and you'd have that emergency contact and waiver and all that. So typically after not being allowed to come for a couple of days or a week, they'll get it together and get their registration forms filled out. Um, but they, we have a pretty consistent group that shows up every week. They know that they can come in, go up to the gym, find a coach shirt up there, run basketball. Um, some of them like to go to the computer room or use the PS five. Um, there's some that just like to hang out with our team staff out downstairs. And we've been getting a lot of um regular participation, which is really exciting. We've also had the opportunity for our team staff to take some of those kids to local football games so that they could support their friends. And then our staff can also be there supporting our community as well. Um, registration numbers, for the first month, we started beginning of the month with eighteen kids signed up for the K through two or K through second, and now we've got twenty-four signed up, they get about sixteen a day. Um, third through eighth, we had forty-one as beginning of the month, and now we have fifty-six signed up for averaging about thirty-two students a day. Team registration, as I said, we started with five, now we have thirteen. Um, there are more showing up, they just have to get them registered so they can stay. Community engagements, um, we went to this, this year's homecoming game at Hudson High School a couple of weekends ago now, I think, a couple of weeks ago, maybe last week, I don't know. Um, it was cool because we got to see um teams that both work with us and teams that come to the program, playing football, being homecoming for, or just supporting their peers and stands. Um, and it was just really nice, always nice to get out in the community as a group from the youth center and just kind of uh be a part of everything that goes on. Uh, we also had the opportunity to set up at the meet the teacher night at M C Smith last week. Uh, we got to see kids from soccer after-school in camp in a different setting. Kind of like seeing your teacher out of school, seeing your after-school person in school, so that always kind of blows their minds with this one. Uh, we had free coloring pages and trans, we got to design their bracelets and we started signing up for the basketball. At the game. Um, our youth department soccer leave almost over, got two more weekends. We've had a high number of participants, not only from our um actual players, but the parents have been much more engaged this year. A lot of them coming out on the field to run drills or to uh help coach. We're really excited with how many um kids we've had engaged this year. We're hopeful that we can build next year kind of, uh, I guess, the program to meet the needs of a growing group of soccer players, so. Another bunch of those kids playing soccer is gonna do a great job. A couple of Oakdale park updates. We are still waiting to hear back from National Grid about getting a meeting and to talk about access to the trail back to Spring Street. Uh, it's not something we forgot, it's still something we're working on, the mayor's office is working to get in touch. And uh, what we're waiting on now is uh just a survey to be completed on the National Grids. And I believe um, we're gonna keep pursuing this and see what we can do and see what kind of outcome we can get to regain access to that path. You'll also notice if you've been at Oakdale the past week or two, um, there's some piles of wood chips and some logs around. We were supposed to do a workday last Friday um with C L C, this is trail maintenance, repair the stairs and all that. C L C had to reschedule for some staffing issues, uh, but they'll be there this Friday to do the trail maintenance um and to rebuild those stairs, I guess. Initially build those stairs and never got finished by the entrance to the Trailblazer Skater. So we're excited about that. Um, the ones that they're gonna use to rebuild those stairs are actually from a locust tree that fell over in the woods at Oakdale that EPW helped come and cut down for us. Um, as you can see in the photo, it actually got hung up on some other trees, which can be really dangerous. So we're really grateful to DPW for helping us cut that down. And that's it.
Councilman, what's your? Margaret?
Yeah, so I'm just looking at the after-school numbers. So right now, when I was looking at this earlier, you have ninety-three kids, they don't all come any day. But combining the, you're up to twenty-four for K through two, fifty-six in the next stage, group and thirteen, so you're at ninety-three right now? In after-school?
Yes.
So in the past, some of those numbers, um, you know, when you reported, I guess maybe it's just later in the year, but you've been up to a hundred and forty children. So it seems, is this unusual that you're down to ninety-three?
No, because they have to register every year based on how the paperwork works right now. And so families just have been slow to register if they're just doing like uh soccer or football. They won't bother to register until that's over and then they'll start coming after that. But this is typically how the numbers grow, because we do have to hold that boundary of if you're not registered, you can't come. And so if I send a kid, we have to ask them to go home and fill out registration. So it will, I would be shocked if it didn't grow to numbers that it was last year within a couple of months.
Okay.
So if they don't register, so I guess registration starts when it's September?
Uh, we try to start registration in August, try to do it ahead of time. We're gonna try to do it even more farther ahead of time next year. This, we're trying to figure out the best way to do registration. Um, we're looking into software that will make it a lot easier. Right now they have to re-add all of the information for every single kid because we use Google Forms. Uh, we're looking at the software where they could just add their families and click on the triggers they wanna be and that'll make it much easier.
We did, but it's uh, it's discontinued. What, you told me there yet for after?
Uh, we were using one when I first got there, but there was still the data entry issue and the user issue was, wasn't something that families were able to engage in easily. And so it wasn't meeting our needs and it was costing a lot of money. Um, so I did find a program that um charges you based on revenue. And if you make under ten thousand dollars in revenue, which is where we stand currently, um, it's under three thousand for the year for the software, which is pretty good and it meets all of our needs. So we're hoping to um get that compared to some other software that we looked into, which is five times the price for the same exact thing. So hopefully we can get that for next year.
Registration includes parental permission and?
Emergency contacts, wellness notes, like any special needs that they might have. It's, it's a lot of, lot of information you need to have someone give you in your care.
Okay.
So the revenue you're describing, is that from the after-school program or is that from summer?
Um, so it would be the combined revenues, we don't make ten thousand yet. So for us, it would only be three thousand, because under ten thousand.
No, you said the revenue, you said your current revenue is approximately, it's under ten thousand.
It's under ten thousand. So the revenue is from registration fees for um camp or after-school.
So the conclusion.
The conclusion, yeah, any, any revenue from our whole department for the whole year. We're working on getting up there, there's a building rentals, that kind of stuff, but.
Are these, is registration limited to all the residents of the city of Hudson?
Uh, it is not. It's from, I think there are like ninety-nine percent the city, the school districts. Uh, but because of the displacement of families and because of the lack of opportunities for the kids in our school district, we are, most of them primarily go.
When we looked at those numbers in the past, nearly forty percent of the children in the after-school program don't reside in the city of Hudson. And we don't think of the school district, they do not reside.
We can track that again this year, we haven't.
Yeah.
With the busing being as limited as it is this year, it's hard for kids outside of the city to see coming anyway, so.
I, I think we got to get those numbers.
So this is a program paid like twelve grand for, it's absolutely now?
Yes.
And then have you thought of doing registration, like at last, you know, bring the registration to the, like, across?
And then have you thought of doing registration, like at last, you know, bring the registration to the, like across wins and things like that?
Yeah, I mean, we've done that in the past, so we can do it again for sure. Yeah.
And then what about doing, because the school, obviously you're competing with the new school program. So, but in terms of the teams, what about getting registration wires to the school district? So after school, when they're closed, they can then, the keys can come down to the youth center.
Yeah, we share our registration forms, all of them with the school district. They are all online and it's just scanning a QR code and then you can access the registration form online. We share it with them. They send it out to all the families. It's a process, but we get them all registered eventually.
Thank you.
I just have one other question in terms of school districts. The $5 million grant that they got in conjunction with Columbia Green Medical House.
Yeah.
How is that going? How many of the kids, how many children are registered with that? How are you interfacing with that?
They had written us into that when they did it, so we are not a part of that. We are talking to them and like all their ways we can partner and really paying for opportunities there, but we haven't confirmed anything yet.
Do you have any idea how many children or many students of the school district are involved in that program? That's a pretty large one.
With the school? No, I'm not aware of their numbers for their programs.
Because that may impact what we did.
Possibly, yeah. But we'll see, I guess.
Liz, what's the process in the standard for staff to use city, your city vehicles for personal use?
For personal use? If they don't use our vehicles for personal use.
Because there was a, a report that your, the van was seen in an apartment complex, unloading with a staffman, unloading furniture into an apartment.
The church, I would imagine what that was, is the church that we use for programming had so they wanted us to throw out, I would imagine instead of throwing it out, we dropped it off in an apartment. But that was for the program, so.
Now, this is at the apartment complex and it was multiple, it was a couple of kids and staff unloading furniture into an apartment complex in Greenport.
Well, I am not sure what you're talking about and I don't think the vans are going to use for any personal reason. But if you see something happening in the moment, you can feel free to let me know so I can take into it. But I don't know anything about personal reasons.
Well, that's why I emailed you a couple of minutes ago. So is, so is there a mileage sheet and, and everything, you know, that accounts for who's using the van? Like in my program, we have to do a mileage sheet and we have to do like who's in the van for liability. Do you, do you do that?
We have waivers for the vans and we have our licensed drivers and background check drivers driving. But we don't do mileage. I don't think anybody, I'm not sure that the department uses that often.
So if you do a trip, you, you do it by commission slips each trip, right?
Our registration is a week or two to be driven in our vehicles for local trips and anything that's out of the district, we would do that.
We have one on the line. Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah. Hey Liz, well, first I'd like to make a quick comment that the fact that anybody has to ask or request information about maintenance at our largest park, Oakdale Park, that we have to ask somebody who heads the youth department is really ridiculous. And if the council's listening and the mayor's listening, we need a parks department. The youth department should not be responsible for maintaining our largest park or any park in the city. Not just during the summer and certainly not during the winter. Their office isn't there. So with that said.
Thank you. Got your question?
As you know, two, two or three years ago, I pointed out to you that the new bleachers in the park over by, by the west side of the pond, of the lake, the varnish on it came off immediately. DPW, I guess, put varnish on the wood that, that, that the city bought and it immediately washed off. And I told you about it. Is, is that wood going to remain unprotected?
I guess we will see what we have time to repair in the park this winter.
So I guess my question is like two or three years ago, when you were aware of it, did, was DPW made aware of, of the fact that they varnished all that 20 planks of wood and not, not any of that varnish held up? Were they told about it?
I don't remember two years ago, Bill. I'm sorry.
But DPW did the work, is that correct?
Well, next question or?
Okay, so, so today we talked about the portage on that's at the entrance and exit to Oakdale that everybody sees. And I know you explained to me that some people rely on that, rely on that portage on. Who relies on it when, when the, when the summer camp is not in session?
Okay, move right along. Thank you, Bill.
What's wrong with that question, Tom?
Liz is gone.
Because you let her go. Because you won, because you won such a great meeting, Tom.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, we're moving along. So that's. Oh, sure.
Just in regards to the youth program, I think it's important for folks to understand there's a coalition of youth programs that exist called Co-hosts. So the youth center is not the sole provider of youth programming in the city of Hudson and they're not necessarily competing for kids. So just as you're thinking about how many, how many kids less it is this year, there's other programs that are happening and that are getting funding to provide programs this time of year. There's sports that kids are signing up for. They'll probably be back with sports and so the numbers don't actually reflect how many kids are being served by the youth center.
So part of my question is.
It wasn't any response.
No, no, that's okay. No, 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 but I can explain. We have multiple, multiple programs for youth in Hudson. And the youth department has a very high budget. And one of the things I'm asking about, particularly with regard to the MHACG grant for the school district, if there is now a big program coming on board, to what extent will that fill the need that is currently borne by the city of Hudson?
And I can't answer that, but I'm going to say the youth center is the staple youth program, whether it's smaller than other programs, whether the numbers are going down or going up. That is the staple youth program that isn't beholden to the same standards as nonprofits. So it's the most stable.
Isn't maybe anyone to use the center have to be ready to be liability risk? I think Liz said they were. Yeah, so all, right, everyone. Yeah, so let's move along and there are a number of laws on our desk, but we also will be voting next week on the good cause eviction law. And I think some people would like to talk about that tonight, if I'm not mistaken.
I'd like to raise a question about the good cause eviction.
Raise a question?
Yes, about voting on it next week. CEDC, the Columbia Economic Development Corporation, is currently undertaking a study. The results should be available in a couple of weeks of the actual status of housing, types of housing, what is available, where the needs are and so forth. And I think it would be hopeless to wait until we get information from that study to be available in two or three weeks. So that we have more of a context for exactly what the landscape of housing is, rental housing in the city of Hudson. Because we don't really have very much information. We don't know how many units would be exempt. We don't know how many are under, you know, either based on CRA or CRO or based upon that number. We don't have any idea of how many units are owned by large landlords versus small landlords. And I think it's, you know, waiting a month to try to get more information would not be a bad idea. That's just, I'm just trying to put that out there.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council?
I'm going to agree with Margaret because my, my questions around this, voting on it as it is, depend on statistics and we don't have them.
If no one will start, I will start. Hi, my name's Morgan. I used to live at Free Waron Street before my apartment flooded and I was moved out. It's now being used for commercial purpose and good cause eviction would have protected me from that. So I'm, I guess maybe one of the sort of statistics you're looking for is real people who are experiencing eviction right now, whether you, I'm not sure like what data that you would receive from it. I'd also say that when this law is signed by Captain Hokel and people, that I would sort of hesitate to call her a pioneer of housing justice. And she was okay with this law. And then one other thing, which I guess is also kind of a question, is I was reading some of the comments that were sent in. And they seem to be sort of automated from, I don't know, Google, but I did a sort of preliminary Google search. And the first four people that I looked up had CO boxes in New York City. And so I just was wondering what the sort of processes for vetting those individuals.
As of now, we don't vet the communications that are sent through email. In fact, this recent people have kind of tested the boundaries of what we have put into communications. So in fact, in the near future, we're going to discontinue putting into the communications and emails. We will continue to have them available online so that, you know, if you foil them, you can still find that out. But the policy is to let any email pre-posted right now. And it's from both, we've had emails from all over in both in support and against. Dominic, our first question. I don't know. It's up to you if you want to give it up. Not my choice.
No, from the, from the conversation, we just don't talk.
Well, we're talking right now.
That's why, if that you're proving yourself, I think that people that live in this area, is there a reason why? Is there a reason why these gentlemen are recusing themselves in the conversation?
They don't have to, Chris, they don't have to say, do they?
No, no, they don't.
We can't hear you right now.
All right, I'll try this again. If you have a council member that chooses to recuse, a recusal would technically require leaving the room. Now, in this instance, as we had, there had been discussions about what's a conflict of interest? Simply being a tenant or being a landlord is not a conflict of interest. If the council member still feels that they are conflicted out of this and they need to recuse, then yes, technically they should be leaving the room for a recusal. If it's a matter of simply abstaining from a vote, it doesn't matter. They can participate in the conversation. They don't, you know, as long as they don't have a real, a legal conflict of interest, they can participate in the conversation. They're just not voting on the actual proposal.
My question, my actual question was, do they have to disclose why they're recusing themselves specifically?
Yes, the reason for the recusal should be placed on the record. And that, this was something that was discussed at a prior meeting as well. So I, I believe that there was discussion on the record at that prior meeting as to the basis for the recusals.
Most importantly, Chris, I'm fairly agree that a recusal or an exception is a no vote.
Yes, that's absolutely true.
Come on. I'm not here to tell council members how to vote, but I'm just wondering, if council members are going to recuse themselves, are they also going to recuse themselves from the city budget, which does have a more of an impact on their financial stability than good cause eviction? And we won't be voting on the budget soon.
Supervisor.
I would just like to put on there, but I think it's extremely irresponsible of elected officials to refuse themselves on a vote that tenants and their constituents have spoken out in support of and against, and leave the room without giving notice as to what they're leaving for. I don't think that that is what people have elected you to do. I think that this room is full of people and people are looking for a conversation. I think that when we have the conversations with our elected officials, that we haven't gotten a lot of the answers that they're looking for. And I think there's not a lot of room for appropriate dialogue. We've proven that this is, you're not going to be the first municipality to adopt this. This is something that is being done in good faith throughout the state because we now have the right to do that. And that's something that we've been fighting for and looking to do for quite some time. And a lot of us have been a part of the conversation. This is not something that's brand new. We've worked really, really hard on trying to get the best versions. And this is still not the strongest version. This is something that we are asking for a start so that we can work on it together. We're trying to have participatory government and it's not working. It's not happening. A lot of the council members are not allowing that to happen. There's support for you as council members. Your constituents are trying to speak to you. They're trying to tell you what their reality is and it's being ignored. And for two council members to walk out of the room and not give a reason for why they are recusing themselves, besides just being a landlord, I think it's completely inappropriate and a slap in the face to all of their constituents that came here tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hola, soy Nelson.
Hi, I'm Nelson from Columbia Community Organization, the annual community organizer. And I'm happy to be here. We have a really beautiful city. A los inquilinos, much gente se está yendo de Boston, se está yendo para los pueblos. But I'm saddened by the fact that, you know, you have a really beautiful city. I'm noticing that the city is becoming exclusive, right? And it's becoming exclusive of not including renters in the city or not, not, you know, taking in. Because the rent is increasing drastically and we know that the working class is finding it harder to be able to find a place to be able to rent in the city. And owners of, of certain, you know, their owners or landlords rather are picking out renters for no good cause. Sometimes they're putting certain things on the wall. And my question is, the, the community that we serve is a working class community. It's a community that is producing and, and providing to this local economy. My question to you all is, so what is the plan? What is the plan if we don't work with them? So it's going to be the plan for this working class that they're no longer to afford living in the city that they work in? Thank you.
Right to the border?
Yes.
What's that?
In the past, when we have had public comment, you have required that the public commonly be residents of the city of Hudson. Is that not the rule here to students?
Uh, no, it's not.
So it varies depending upon what the topic is as to whether or not. So it's just arbitrary, no?
No.
Why was it, why was, in the, in the, when we have public comments in the Gaza discussion, you specifically only allow people who are residents of Hudson to speak?
Actually, you don't remember who weren't.
And I remember one person in particular, who had a resident of Hudson's before. Because you, you had put in a place, only people, only Hudson people were to speak. So if we want to have people from Hudson here expressing our constituents, expressing their support or their opposition to this law.
expressing their support or their opposition to this law, people should indicate whether they reside in Hudson or do not. And if we're gonna not allow public comment from non-residents in other meetings, we should be consistent here, once we're allowed public comment regardless of residency, we should be consistent in all forms.
Okay. Anyone else on the street?
Under the public?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Serena. I'm a campaign coordinator with Columbia County Sanction Movement. If some of my colleagues and some of our members can stand up that are here in support of Good Cause right now, I think there's several of us that are here today in the council meeting, making sure that we're making our voices heard in favor of Good Cause. So CCSM started in 2016 and we have over 550 immigrant community members that live in the city of Hudson, many of which we have heard four point stories of them getting evicted or them being threatened to get evicted because of their immigration status. And we've primarily worked with immigrant community, many of which are undocumented. And so we just wanna share that a lot of our members have been facing and reporting, have been reporting intimidation from their landlords, who are threatening to cut their, their contract because, you know, for various reasons, but they're threatening that with ICE unless they leave the premises, unless they leave their homes. And so we know that this isn't right, that people are getting threatened because of their immigration status. And they're, you know, essentially being driven out of their homes, right? If they don't leave the homes for X reason, right, they're being threatened with ICE. And we know that that's not fair. Our communities, especially our documented communities, sometimes lives in constant fear of what could happen next if they are, you know, stopped by the police and then somehow escalated. And so it's not fair that they are then threatened with this in their homes, knowing that, you know, there's a landlord that is threatening with ICE if they don't leave their home. And many of the community members that we serve have families as well. So these are children that are also going to the local city Hudson School District. And it's not fair that their lives are upended simply because a landlord wants to increase the price of rent in order to rent to wealthier people, wealthier individuals, right? And so the median rent so far has risen over 36% since 2017 and nearly 50% of renters in Hudson are rent burdened. And we know that throughout the pandemic, the costs of living have drastically increased, primarily rent. You know, in a beautiful city like my colleague mentioned, who wouldn't wanna live here, right? But we know that many of our community members are working class and they are being driven out of the city they keep working. And we know that they contribute immensely to our local community, to our local economy. You can walk into sort of any business on the street and, you know, there will be, you know, a community member of ours working hard. And so we are here encouraging the council to really take into consideration all of these comments that we are bringing to you today. Take into consideration that we want Good Cause to pass and that tenants need protections now. Statistics, we understand that you, you know, we all believe it's really important, right? But we know that there are people here that are sharing the stories of what they are facing or what we see our community members facing. And that are, those are the things that are already happening. And unless we actually vote in favor of this, you know, they can't have, they won't have anything to protect themselves. An elderly gentleman, and I will share really briefly, with recently received an eviction letter. He is elderly, he lives with his wife who needs constant medical attention. He receives many social services from CCSM and also from the local, from the local Salvation Army. He received this letter, there was no reason at all as to why it was getting kicked out. And now he has to leave the premises and he doesn't know what he was, what he's gonna do. He's been living here for years and years and years. And so we're trying to figure out what to do to support them. But if had this legislation been passed already, then that wouldn't have happened. As long as he was being a responsible person for his rights. So we need the council, we urge the council to really pass Good Cause. Many municipalities have it already, they're doing what's right for their constituents. And now is your turn to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to say something, first of all, the notion that this law needs more statistics to back it up, I think is absurd, partly because the first time Good Cause went forward, it did require a lot of statistics. And it was revealed that those problems to, to get those statistics were almost impossible. Secondly, this version was formulated in order to avoid that process by deliberately no longer requiring the statistical element that the first version had. So that kind of, I think, eats a lot to whether, whatever statistics you're looking for, most of them cannot even be obtained. There's no method for determining how many units are owned by, there's no clear method for determining how many units are owned by a single landlord or not, because there's all kinds of impediments for these kinds of statistics. So the law was simplified for lack of reason. So I think we will continue to vote on it next meeting. Any other comments or questions?
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is Brogan Rungan with For the Many, I'm fighting for local housing legislation across the Hudson Valley and also help pass the statewide Good Cause Eviction law. I'll, I'll keep my comments brief. First of all, I just wanna apply this council for, you know, taking a deliberate approach to this legislation and really understand the impulse to want more information. The thing is, the council has already received a lot of information and there's a lot of things we already know are true. What is true is that local left of officials from other cities in the Hudson Valley that have passed the Good Cause eviction, like Kingston and Gibson, have submitted comments to this council saying that this legislation has been hugely beneficial to their communities. What we know is true is in the city of Kingston, already a tenant successfully used Good Cause eviction through the courts to stay in their homes. So the legislation is already working in other cities. What we know is true is that 163, last time I checked, eviction warrants have been filed here in the city of Hudson. So if any further delay in passing this legislation would mean that tenants lose their home. They have no more time to spare. And what we also know is true is the majority of these evictions come from holdover evictions. So a landlord refusing to allow his tenants to continue to live in that apartment, not from these, not from, not paying the rent from other reasons, is holdover evictions, which is specifically what Good Cause eviction would cover. What's also true is several landlords in the cities that have passed the Good Cause eviction have also come out in support of this legislation. This law does not discriminate or punish small or good landlords. If anything, it gives them a competitive advantage that corporate landlords are currently exploiting through those bad practices and reshape that playing field and make life easier for the smaller or the good landlords that act ethically. Also just to add that, you know, this coalition of people that have come together in support of Good Cause eviction includes community groups like Hudson Castle Housing Coalition and For the Many, CCSM, the Kite's Nest. It includes policy experts, the Community Service Society, one of the foremost policy thinking states has submitted a statement of support for Good Cause eviction, as well as Greater Hudson Promise Neighborhood, as well as additional legal experts have submitted statements of support. And several unions give out support of the statewide legislation as well because they know, whether it be healthcare workers or communication workers, that their members are also getting priced out of these communities. There's a reason that so many groups are coming together that work on housing affordability issues in support of this legislation. They know it's one of the single biggest steps this council can take to fix the housing crisis here in Hudson. It won't solve all of our problems, but it will keep families in their homes. And I urge you to move forward with this and pass it next week. Thank you.
Yes.
Hi, I'm John, I'm the figure of Hudson Promise neighborhood, actually, my voice. I think a piece of this that, the thing is for you all to realize that there are no other options for people that are being evicted from their homes right now. The motels in our county are completely at capacity, as well as the surrounding counties. So if an individual presents to DSS as homeless today, there's no guarantee that they will be put up anywhere. I know we all have big feelings about homelessness in our cities. So I just think it's really important for you all to realize that there are no other options for people that are being pushed out of their homes with a social service system that is completely taxed in terms of the volume of people that are staying. So I just wanna put that on everyone's radar that we are really in a very, very bad place right now in terms of homeowners housing. And so keeping people in their homes is, needs to be at the very top of all of our priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, can I just, clarification on Crystal's explanation about when a council member can recuse and leave the room? Because when you asked Crystal for an explanation, I heard that under the way she explained it in this circumstance, they would have to be a part of the conversation, but could recuse themselves from a vote. So can I just get clarification on that? Because I feel like they were leaving as she was explaining. Go ahead, Crystal.
There's two different ways to, there's.
You gotta get closer to your mic. I don't know, your mic is starting to.
No, I'm sorry, yep, I have to change computer setup today.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear it at all now.
Hold on. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, great. So there is. Okay, there's recusal and there's abstention. Recusal, well, is required if there is a conflict of interest, okay? If there's a legal contract, conflict of interest. So for example, you've got a, a council member that is, got a family member working on a contract and that contract is before the council to approve. That is a conflict of interest, they need to walk out of the room, they cannot vote on it, they cannot be part of the discussions. Abstention is different. Abstention is when there is not a conflict per se, but the council member, for whatever reason, feels they cannot vote on the proposal that's before them. In that situation, they are not required to leave the room or not be part of the discussions. They are simply choosing not to vote on the application before them. My understanding is that there are two council members that believe they have conflicts of interest with respect to the proposed legislation. Now, to be clear, just being a landlord or just being a tenant is not a, you know, a conflict of interest that would require recusal. The council members explained at the last meeting that this, that this legislation was on for. They explained their basis for believing that they had conflicts of interest, they have chosen to recuse. And when they recuse, they have to be out of the room and they cannot be part of any of the discussions because the concern is that when you have a member that is in a position where they have to recuse and if they stay part of those discussions, that their presence in and of itself can sway council members or the public. There's a, there's a feeling of, that there needs to be better transparency. So that is the difference between the, when I was talking about recusal and being required to leave the room versus abstention where they can be part of those discussions, but they are not, they're choosing not to vote.
Thank you, Crystal.
There's a.
Thank you.
So Crystal, I understand the difference of what you said, but what I was asking was when you do recuse yourself, you have to, you said they put it on the record at the last meeting, but none of us heard it. And then now you're saying that recusing, being a landlord doesn't make you have to recuse yourself. So we still kind of don't know why they accuse themselves.
I, I do understand that. And yes, it should be on the record. And it was put on the record at the last meeting and it should be reiterated each time they're gonna, you know, when they mention that they're recusing, the race, the reason for it.
Okay, I'll make sure that happens at the October.
Thank you, Crystal.
Thank you. Yes, Ron, how many?
Yes, thank you. Just an additional point of clarification. I'm assuming that if a member recuses him or herself and they're out of the room, they no longer count toward a quorum. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then additionally, in terms of abstaining, I believe in the House of Representatives, members who want to abstain actually vote present to make it clear that they're not voting either yes or no, but they are in the room and they do still count toward a quorum.
And abstention implies that already, but yes.
Well, I mean, I think saying present makes it clear and it's, the important thing is counting, in my mind, is counting toward a quorum.
Oh, right. They, they will count towards the quorum, that is true. But that will happen at the beginning of the meeting, when they say that they're here. Okay? Anyone else online? Anyone in the meeting, I mean, here, present, in real life?
I'll say something. I don't know, um, I, so I've lived in, I don't currently live in Hudson right now, but I've been working in Hudson. I currently live in Albany. But what I'm, what I'm seeing through my work is, first, I've lived here for a while and the Hudson I grew up in is not the Hudson that's here, right? And that, which is great, that means Hudson is evolving, Hudson is growing. But what Hudson is also doing is Hudson's pushing out generations of people that live here, people that built this community. But I'm seeing them being pushed out to all, I mean, I'm seeing them being pushed out of Hudson and that's what, that, that's not right. Yes, we want new people to come to Hudson, we want residents to, we want Hudson to be built better than what it is. Every year we wanna make Hudson greater, right? But we can't kick the, the backbone, we are, the community is the backbone of Hudson. So we can't let Hudson overrun by businesses and, and kick the actual residents out and make it to where the residents aren't supporting living in the area, but people coming outside of the area are, who are able to pay four, five thousand or four, like, that's not realistic for people to be able to pay down the street. It, it's just because the people aren't even making that much at work to be able to cover the rent. So how, how can that be a standard in a city that when I grew up in, everybody looked out for each other? Landlord, Anthony. And it's like a doggy dog world now, nope. Like, I, I don't like, that, I think that's just really upsetting to me and that's why all of us in this room are so passionate because of, of the majority of these people that I see in this room, I grew up. And their families don't have homes in Hudson that we used to play in. Because they got kicked out, they got evicted because they can't afford the rent. That's my stuff.
Thank you. Carlos and Beto say you're not the same guy.
Hi.
You're opposed. You're in favor.